Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inglewood City Council. Today is October 2nd, and the time is now 7:30 p.m. Could be four, we get off the steward, prayer. Let us pray.
Father God, we come no other way but lean on your everlasting love. Follow with this message, continue to keep your everlasting love floating to and forth through Inglewood. Father, most of all, touch the leaders of this community that they can make positive decisions that will move this city forward. In the name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Madam Clerk, roll public.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Washington.
Present.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Howard.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
You have the full house.
All right, moving right into approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
What? Moved and properly supported in discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a discussion there, a couple corrections, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, but first is in public participation.
On the agenda?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I do that every time, please.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion, carries. All right, Ms. Triplet, code red.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
And to the audience and the viewing audience as well. My name is Latoria Triplet, and I am the DPS Superintendent. And this is Alicia Anderson, the best superintendent and the best administrative assistant in the world. So we stand before you today to introduce to some of you, but then bring to the attention of others, about our Code Red Alert System. So we're going to do a brief presentation first, and then at the end of our presentation, we'll go a little bit deeper and we'll ask questions. We'll answer questions if you have any, okay? So to start off, what is Code Red to some of you who are not familiar with it? Code Red is an emergency notification system that can be used to deliver mass communication with our general public. It's not a social media or anything like that, so to the general public, you will not be able to talk back and forth with anyone. We want to make sure that that's noted. So it'll, you will receive alerts for snow emergencies, fire emergencies, police emergencies, road or water projects, boil water alerts, or anything that's going on in the community. You'll see, you will receive an alert on your text phone, on your phone. So it keeps residents safe, informed, and assured of what's going on within the city. Who can use it? All city of Inglewood residents and employees are encouraged to sign up. Information is generated by department heads and administration only. So now, this is where it gets a little deep. It's two ways to register, two ways you can register. So the first way.
So the first way to register is by texting Inglewood Alerts to the number 24639. Once you text that, once you text Inglewood Alerts to that number, you will receive a link. And once you receive that link, you should be brought to a page that looks like this. It will basically have you fill out your first name, last name, and create a username and password. If you do choose to use this option, you have to have an email. It will not work if you don't have an email, if you don't have access to your email. Once you do this step, it'll give you a drop box, and the only option will be for you to choose the email, and they will send a code to that email, so you can verify yourself. And then you'll enter the code right here, you'll verify, and then it'll ask you for a security question. Once you do that, it will take you to this screen here, basically confirming that your answers have been updated successfully. And then you will get this screen here where you can change or add any information. So you'll be able to add your location, you'll be able to add different devices, like your phone number, another email. You can add as many factors as you would like, and then you'll also have a group. So it'll give you the option to choose if you want water alerts, traffic alerts, weather alerts, or community events that's going on within the city. This next way.
So just to piggyback off of that, the first way to sign up, you have to have an email. You have to, you have to, because it's gonna, if you go that way, the first way, when you put your email in there, it's gonna send a code to your phone, and you're gonna have to access your email to enter that code. So that's the part you want to keep in mind. You have to have an email for the first way. So the second way to register is you click the, you can get on your computer or your phone, and you're going to type in accountportal.onsoft.net/cityofinglewood, and it'll come up, that page will come up. So when that page comes up, you're gonna go at the top to Information Center, at the very top of the page, and then you're gonna go down to Code Red Community Hub. You're gonna click it. Then you're gonna sign up for Code Red Emergency Alerts, and you're gonna click Sign Up. And then you're gonna go down, and then it's gonna ask you, it's gonna ask you, do you wanna, it's gonna, you wanna, it's gonna ask you, how do you want to sign up? You're gonna say, no, you want to continue to enroll as a guest. So you're only enrolling as a guest this way, and it's mainly for people who don't have an email. Then this is the way you want to sign up. You're signing up as a guest. And then it's gonna ask you again, are you sure you don't want to sign up an account? Do you want to continue to sign up as a guest? And you're gonna say, no, you want to continue to enroll as a guest. So if you sign up this way, you will not have an account and will not be able to make any changes. So Alicia explained to you that if you sign up as an account, then you can go in there and say, okay, I don't want to get any alerts about events that are happening in the city. I only want the emergency alerts from the police, from the fire, from the, you can do all that if you have an account. So if you sign up as a guest, you're gonna get all the alerts, you're getting everything. You're gonna get events, you're gonna get emergency, you're gonna get, you want to get everything, all the alerts. And we basically have this one mainly for seniors or people who don't have email and can't, or have it and can't access it, because some of them, maybe their children probably set up an email form, but they can't access it. What's the next one? So we have a form here. A person can.
So we have this registration form here. It's basically if you want us to sign up for you. So I know a lot of our elderly, they need help signing up, so we were passing out these registration forms. Me and Tori went to a couple of different apartment communities and a couple of different businesses to hand out these forms, and we got a lot from a lot of the seniors. So if you don't have an email, we suggest using this form, and if you need help, you can fill out this form, and you can either bring it to DPS or you can drop the form off to DPS, and we will sign up for you right then and there on the spot. Or if you can just drop it off, and we'll, we'll do it then.
So we want to keep this form, and we want it only to be dropped off at DPS. Like Alicia said, we have been around to apartments, we've been to some of the businesses, and we, we're, we have, at events that are happening in the city, we will be there, we're signing people. We really want to push this out, because winter is coming, and you know, when people say, we didn't get a notice about this, or if there's a water main break on your street, and your block is gonna be without water for maybe four hours. If you signed up on this alert, we can just alert that area to let them know that they're gonna be without water. So that's just how important this is. So we want to push it. We've been out, like we said, we've dropped off notices to apartment buildings. We're gonna be going back, we're gonna be going to coffee hours with the seniors. We're gonna be going to movie late nights, signing people up. This has become dear to Alicia and I hearts, so we really want to get everybody signed up. Mamas, daddies, cousins, brothers, sisters, family members, everybody. And we're asking that council in your neighborhood, while you're out, anybody that you talk to, give them this, text it to them, tell them to sign up, because we want to get everybody signed up. That's just how important it is. So any questions?
Are you up planning, you're the man?
Please.
Okay, are you up planning on giving any type of instructions? Because even as you're sitting here telling us, and I'm reading it, it's still something that's not easy to grasp. So if you have some little training session.
So we're not having a training session. You can come to us, and we'll hook you up. You can come to DPS, we will make time for you, we'll get your name and phone number if we have to call you. If you want to use your email, if you want to set up an account, you want to use your email, we will stand right there with you and let you take your time, get your email, get the code, give it to us. We are available. We are making ourselves available to everybody, because we want everybody signed up.
Okay, so the big thing is to put on the website that you can go to DTW to get signed up?
Yes, yes.
Now, the other thing is, who is allowed to input into this system?
Only department heads and administration, that's it. It will not be coming from any and everybody, and it's, it's only gonna be city information. Emergencies, like we said, for water alerts, road closures. If your water is gonna be off due to a water main break, if a child is missing, or you know, an alert that there's a kid missing, you got on a red shirt, blue jeans, or whatever. All that kind of emergency stuff is, is the only thing that this is gonna be used for.
Okay, if this is the program that we had talked about, and they came and made a presentation, some things, you know, like city-generated functions were supposed to be put on this. Is this not the case now?
What you means?
Oh, like the parade.
Community events are included. It's just no, we don't want to make it like political, so it's just only.
No, you can't do nothing.
Yeah, so it's just only, yeah, community events.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so city community, city community events. So just for somebody having a block party or something, you won't get that alert. It's just city events.
Okay.
So we're asking that for council and the audience, you can, we have some, we dropped off some pamphlets over there. Yes, so we're asking that everybody, you tell your neighbors, your friends, when you see people at the grocery store, wherever you are, just tell everybody how important it is. If they have a problem, they come to DPS. They can call us. But we just ask for everybody to be patient with us, because probably everybody might, a lot of people might be calling. So just be patient. If you leave a message, we will return the call. We just want to get everybody signed up. We want to get this rolling. We want to get this rolling. That's just how important it is to us, and we know that it's a good benefit for the city.
All right, thank you very much.
Good job.
One more thing, so we're gonna, we're asking you guys tonight to adopt this month Code Red, so we can push this out. We actually ought to push it out to say, this month is Code Red for the city of Inglewood. Come to DPS and sign up. So that's what we're asking for you guys tonight as a body, to push it out for us to say, this month it will be dedicated as Code Red.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think nobody has.
Thank you guys.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you. Hey, Derek, I wanted to make sure you talk to the folks. We're, Derek, if you could, just pull them to talk to them. And if it pleases this body, just based off of what we talked about, we're going to omit a presentation from Indianapolis Point until we get it all together and go for mayor. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, okay, all right. Moving right into consent agenda?
So moved, we directed.
Okay. Go ahead, ma'am.
Second.
Yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, it's all in public participation, but there's some, one says the name is incorrect. It says G A B, like Victor, E. Henderson. And then another one at the bottom says that the car was at Wheatley Park. And I don't believe that was correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. I thought it was the old City Hall property.
Exactly.
Okay, so those are the two corrections that need to be made.
Okay, so your clerk got those?
Yes.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion, carries. Awards and commissions, seen none previous business, none new business.
Oh, before you go on, didn't I see something in our email about a lady that wanted to be on the planning commission? Or something like that?
Uh, I think she would be called that. I know I do have a candidate, potential candidate. I did see her come in early.
I saw something in the email about that, whatever, but if we're not gonna act on it, that's fine.
But I think we're full right now, all right?
Got two vacancies.
Oh, cool. Who we missing?
Uh, one or two, remember, uh, I'm sorry. We have, we do have vacancies, because when Kimberly Faizan resigned.
Okay.
And I think so one other is that visit.
I think it's just the one.
Just the one, okay.
Okay, all right, I know where Kim resigned, okay. All right. Okay, we'll check into that. Moving right into new business, please, Mr. Chair.
Item 9A is the Planning Department asking this body to consider approving special land use for an auto repair shop at 1475 Middle Belt Road in the B3, General Business District.
What's your pleasure?
So moved.
Is this support?
Second, I'm sorry.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Aye.
Ayes have a motion, carries. Item B, please.
IPD is asking this body to consider authorizing the administration to enter an agreement with Block Group Incorporated to lease six block automated license plate reader cameras for the Inglewood Police Department using JAG grant funds in the amount of $20,900, including installation for first year, and the department will budget $18,000 annually.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just have a question for, for sake, in the budget. Now, you mentioned that you're gonna budget this annually. Did you have a particular line item? Or you just gonna look through your whole budget totally?
Well, JAG grant is what we've targeted at this point to utilize. JAG grant will, will support us. If there's another location in the budget that I can use that pops up later on, I may ask to change that. But right now, JAG grant seems to be the location where it'll be funded from.
Now, also, what, what other things that you use the JAG grant for in this?
Uh, it's, it's very limited. It's all we can use it for is equipment, basically, police equipment.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
We have the chief, and I believe he said someone was coming that utilized it.
Yes, I have.
The public that wasn't here when.
Deputy Chief Mitchell from River Rouge Police Department is here, and I'm gonna ask him to speak on the effects that the flock has had on this community now.
How you doing, Mayor and Council? Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Deputy Chief Mitchell from River Rouge Police Department. We've, and we've had flocks going on two years now. We looked into getting LPRs for our department. We had a spate of homicide and shootings in our city in late 2020. And in '21, Mayor approached and asked, what do we need to try to curb this, these shootings and to help our detectives? So we looked into three LPR companies. Flock by far was the best, in our opinion, with the, the price point, the priority of the, the equipment that they had was, you know, no one else had that technology out there. So I went to Mayor and Council, we got approved for actually 30 cameras. I went to them for 20, and they came back and said, get 30. That's unheard of. So we were blessed in that department. Since then, we had our cameras installed in late August 30th, and from September 2nd to December 31st of 2020, we had around 25 successful block hits that involved stolen vehicles. Recovered stolen vehicles, license plates, people wanted on felony warrants, domestic investigations, and narcotic arrests. It's been a complete game changer for our department. Our first hit came in on September 12th involving a crash of 300. It decided to do donuts out in front of our city hall, while we don't know to this day. Respondent officers, when they arrived to the area, the vehicle actually struck our patrol vehicle and fled the city during 100 miles an hour. Where that flock camera that was located in front of city hall picked up the camera. This vehicle did not have a license plate, but the flock camera still was able to read and get the description of that vehicle. We enlisted the aid of the media, and we had that individual in custody within 24 hours and recovered the vehicle. That was after the very next day, we had a domestic incident where the boyfriend came to the house, shot up the car, fled the scene. All she can give us was a black sedan. We had searched those cameras, got the license plate to the vehicle, registered owner, tracked him down to a residence, I mean, to his place of employment in Ramblis. We were able to recover that vehicle and found it with the weapons still inside the vehicle. We actually went to work with that weapon still inside. He escaped off the back emergency door, but turned himself in the next day and, and gave a full confession to his actions. After that, our third one that we really proud ourselves on came September 16th, involving rival gang members from another city. They came to do a drive-by city and drive-by shooting in our city. They stole the vehicle. We all know 70 to 80% of crimes are used in vehicles. They stole the vehicle to come into our city to do a drive-by shooting on rival gang members. We got the flock hit alert, we responded to the area, we were able to intercept them before committing this drive-by shooting. We had five individuals in the vehicle with assault rifles. We recovered assault rifles with lasers on them, they had ski masks, the whole full nine, and we were able to prevent a drive-by shooting. One of the suspects that was in that vehicle was actually being assaulted in Detroit for another drive-by shooting that he committed two weeks prior. And we were able to prevent that drive-by shooting and take another person off the street that was wanted for a drive-by shooting in the city of Detroit. In December of 2021, FBI bank robber was just released after seven, 17 years in prison. Well, he got out and went back to his old ways and robbed another bank in Florida. This is Florida. He robbed a bank, January 14, 2022. Six days later, he ended up in the city of River Rouge. He entered our city, we got the flock hit alert. Officers located him at a local business. He had a firearm. We don't know if he was about to go in there and try to rob that business as well, but he had already made claims that he wasn't going to be taken alive, he was gonna shoot it out with police. And actually, and he actually had cop killer tattooed across his number. There was a brief pursuit. He crashed, the gun was a jar from him. He grabbed a backpack that was full of ammunition. He ran. We were able to coordinate with our neighboring department, city of E. Corrus, and take him into custody without further incident that actually got the eyes of the FBI. That alert went off. We located him four minutes later. Four minutes after that, the FBI sent a bullet into us saying, hey, this dangerous fugitive might be in your city. And our response to them was, he's already in custody. So they was like, wow, they got that. So after that, they partnered with Flock, and now we have FBI hot list. So hot list is any time the FBI have a wanted subject that they're looking for, anything like that, they push that information right out to Flock, which in turn is pushed out to agencies that have Flock. So we were able to take him into custody. Our officers, actually the head of FBI came in and ordered our officers downtown to FBI building. They were all given citations. This year, we had a shooting around March of this year, two separate shootings at two different locations within an hour span time of each other. And we were able to utilize Flock, identify the shooters, the suspect vehicles, and we were able to take both of those shooters into custody within 24 hours and recover those weapons within 24 hours, all through the Flock. We had a homicide, and this is just awesome for investigative purpose. We had a well-being check to one of our residents. Officers got there, they located her deceased in a home with apparent gunshot wound. Her vehicle was missing. Neighbors reported her vehicle missing. We were able to put that information in the Flock. The vehicle was not registered her, but they was able to give us the make and color of the vehicle. We put that information into Flock and came up with the vehicle. And it not only gave us the vehicle and the location of the suspects driving around our city, hit off every camera, let us know their travel, but it gave us a, a, a time of the shooting that occurred. And we were able to do other investigative work from that. Got the suspect in custody, and when we presented him with the photos of the flock showing him driving, leaving with the vehicle, we got a full confession out of him for that. It's, it's just been a complete game changer using this technology. Just like any other city, we're strapped for manpower, and with technology, it shows us doing more with less, and it shows us having a presence out there, even though we're lacking with the manpower with the police department. So we have 30 cameras, but with that 30 camera, I have access to 697 cameras throughout Michigan alone with other departments that have it. So we're not only utilizing our cameras, we're able to utilize other agencies' cameras with the MOU signing and do our investigative work, because we all know, yep, they committed a crime in our city, but they're laying their head in Inglewood, Taylor, Garden City, and we're able to track them to their place of residency and, and use it for investigating, and get these people off the streets. So this technology, I, I can't speak highly of it. It's been a complete game changer for our city. So if y'all approve this, it's, it'd be a step up in the system for the Inglewood Police Department to have these cameras.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. The question is, can we get more? So I mean, I know that the budget is what it is, but we'll definitely be working on that right, Chief.
Absolutely.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion, carries. Item C, please.
Item C is to consider approving an offer to purchase one vacant parcel located on the west side of Central Street between Parkwood and Rosewood Streets in the amount of $1,500 from David Fonsky.
So moved.
Support.
Moving properly supported, or seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion, carries. Item D, please.
Item D is to consider recognizing through resolution the Redford Model Railroad Club located on Michigan Avenue as the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization conducting activities in Inglewood.
What's your pleasure?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Any discussion?
I believe earlier, the councilman asked if they were here.
Right, is the applicant in the audience, in attendance? There're none. Any, anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any ayes? Okay. Roll call, please, city clerk.
Councilmember Shaw.
No.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Yes.
Councilmember Watley.
No.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Pearl Tim Howard.
Yes, sir.
Have four ayes and.
Motion carries. Alright, item E, please.
Item E is to consider approving the financial health assessment agreement between. I'm sorry. Item E is to consider approving. Thank you for your patience. Is to consider approving the proposed agreement to provide accounting services between the city of Inster and the Manor Casteros and Company.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moving properly, second. Any other discussion? Here none in favor, signify by saying aye. Any ayes? Ayes have a motion carries. Alright, brings us to public participation. We would ask that as you approach, your name is called. You state your name again for the record and you have three minutes to address this body. Walter Cooper.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just wanted to.
Your mic on.
Okay. My name is Director Walter Cooper with the Inster Police Department. I just wanted to remind Council and the city of Inster that this weekend is our Faith in Blue Weekend, um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday, we'll be having a gospel skate night at the Inster Family Skating Rink at thirty-four fifteen Middle Belt Road. Um, the first hundred people do, do get in free, their skate rental and their entry. Um, after that, it'll just be ten dollars a person, eight dollar for the entry fee, two dollars for your skate rental. This Saturday, we will be having our concert, our gospel concert and cookout at the Inster Pavilion, twenty twenty-one Inster Road from twelve P M. to five P M. Um, we do have two food vendors who wanted to donate their food and donate their time for such a great call. So we'll be out there playing um, gospel music. Um, we do have two gospel singers that will be coming to join us for that evening as well. Um, any churches, pastors, or anybody just wanna come out and just have a good old gospel cookout with us, you're more than welcome to join us. And this Sunday, we will, the Inster Police Department will be doing a rolling tour of some of the churches here in the city of Inster. So you will see um, police officers, auxiliary officers, court officers. We will be visiting most of the churches here in the city of Inster. So I just wanted to remind everybody that this weekend is Faith in Blue Weekend.
Alright, thank you. Octavia Smith?
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Residents. I'm glad to be here. I do have a few announcements, so I'm trying to go fast as I can. Y'all know I'm announcing for everybody. But first of all, um, I want you guys to know that tomorrow, October the fourth is the Inster Task Force Farmers Market Final Market Day. So if you guys are able to come on down and support the last day, please do so. It is at two seven zero two zero Michigan Avenue at the Old Chase Building. So please stop by and see us. Um, for those of you who did not make it to Zumba or to yoga, um, I'm really sad to say that right now you can't do it because Western Wayne Family Health Center is going through construction because they are now adding a pharmacy. So when the doors open back up for Zumba and for yoga, I look forward to seeing you guys getting your exercise and physical activity on. Um, the SRC, which is the Senior Regional Collaborative, we have a coalition called Changing the Care Conversation where we are trying to assist those persons who are caregivers. A lot of times people don't know that they're caregiver. That means you're taking care of someone. It could be a family member, someone disabled, um, someone with a mental illness or whatever. So we're trying to get resources available. We meet once a month online only um, at eleven o'clock A M. for those who can attend at eleven and six fifteen P M. You can go to my seniors, M I seniors dot org and just look up events. Um, also for the Chamber of Commerce, last thing, uh, we are into our calendar. Uh, we are collaborating, I believe, still with the city of Inster as we did last year. The calendar was beautiful and wonderful and people are really excited about it. Of course, the date to end the calendar event is October the fifteenth. We're asking people to have their ads and everything in by October the fifteenth. Everyone should have received this information, um, but we put it out multiple times and we're gonna put it out again. So please get your ad. You can get a twenty-five dollar day ad once a month. So people can see you every month instead of just on the day page. So while I'm standing here, are there any questions from Council or from the audience, from anything that I mentioned tonight? Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. Barbara Cooper?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and the residents of the city of Inster. Um, just wanna remind everyone about our pancake, all-you-can-eat pancake on October the twenty-first from eight A M. to twelve noon at the Booker Dozier Recreational Complex. That's twenty twenty-five Middle Belt. For no child without a Christmas. This year, I wanna get it right, Tyreek stand up. The Ink Town writers, the Ink Town writers are going to be helping me with the seniors. Those that want to order a breakfast, they will deliver it to you. And if you want to be picked up, they will pick you up and bring you to the recreational complex. But I need the information by that Thursday, which is the nineteenth, to let me know if you want to be picked up or if you wanna order a breakfast. Okay? Our donation is fifteen dollars. All-you-can-eat pancakes. No child without a Christmas. We are pushing it. We're gonna have another great year. No child without a Christmas. And um, for more information, you can contact me, Barbara Cooper, at three one three five zero five one one four zero. And I want to make sure that all our seniors, and I'm gonna be taking the flyers to the buildings to put up so they can contact us to be a part of the pancake breakfast. Also, those who would like to put an ad in the paper, we need ads for our paper. Please put an ad in the paper. I have some flyers over there. I'm looking for everybody. Even if you don't wanna put an ad, put a patron. The patrons are ten dollars. Everybody can be a patron. We're trying to help our kids have a great Christmas. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. In the uh, senior paper, uh, they have the wrong date, but they are correcting it. They're sending out, they put out new papers. It has October the fourteenth uh, for the breakfast, but she's trying to make up for that. So I just wanna let everybody know. It is October the twenty-first.
Alright, thank you. I do apologize. Tomorrow, today is Monday. You know, I, my mind was thinking Tuesday. Wednesday is the date for the last day of the Task Force Farmers Market. You guys probably know that because it's on Wednesday, but I did say October the fourth. A young man whose birthday is coming up, he reminded me. And I did forget to tell you, I have this pink bed on because this is Pinktober Month, right? For those persons who have cancer. So we are celebrating. So wear pink every day in October. Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Alright, bless. Alright. Okay, and next, um, uh, resident Sandru King.
Good evening, city council and illustrious members of Inster, city of Inster. I wanna first thank you on behalf of American International Academy. We were able to, with the efforts and support of the city of Inster, enroll a hundred and twenty kids into our school. There's still more that need to come home. So, but we're, we're, we're proud of the numbers that we did reach out to this summer. It was a, a Herculean effort on our school, participating with the city and your wonderful events. And we're planning to do more with the city, uh, moving forward. As a resident, I want to bring some things to, to the attention of the, of the council. I already spoke to chief about this. Um, the growth facility right behind us on Trow Bridge and eh, uh, John Daly, at around between ten thirty and twelve o'clock, the workers of that facility come out on our public streets and partake in marijuana smoking because they can't do it on the facility. This just started about a month and a half ago. And it's, it's crowds of them. It's like cars that are parked in that parking lot of the liquor store and that vacant parking lot across the street from the liquor store. Between ten and eleven, they're out there and they're, they're ten to twelve, they're doing their thing. This is almost every day. They do it on their lunch break. Um, so that's a concern of mine, not directly to my house, but traveling to and fro, that's not something I wanna see as a, as a resident of Inster, seeing these people come to our community, make their money, smoke their weed in, in public and then go home. It's not something, cause I walked my son home on a half a day and he, we had to walk through their smoke. Didn't like it. Uh, next thing is, uh, talking to Department of Public Works already about the, I know it's a big city and we have a lot of cleanup to do. Uh, I was interested in buying the lot behind my house, but due to the overgrowth, uh, that is there and now that their trees are starting to fall because they're damaged, if I buy the lot, then I'm, I'm responsible for the cleanup. I don't wanna buy the lot and have to clean it up and it's a mess there already, pre-existing. Um, I would love to talk to the Department of City Works and purchase in whatever department so I can buy the lot, but not in its current condition because it's grossly overgrown. Uh, the last thing is, as a resident, I'm a little concerned about the, the future of our city. Uh, I've been talking to some people who are in Detroit and talking to some major businesses, cause I, I know some people who are looking to develop what is called the New Black Wall Street. And our city is a perfect place for this to take place. And what I mean is big enough to maintain, but small enough to sustain. We should be trying to reach out to black businesses and making this city the place where black businesses want to come thrive and be successful. There's a lot of opportunity out there. I just don't know if we are actively seeking those opportunities to bring businesses of that caliber into our city. Uh, their, their hairlines, their storefronts, sort of what they're doing on Detroit on the avenue of fashion. There are a lot of places, the company, businesses in Detroit that no longer can afford to be in Detroit. And they're looking for the next best place to come. We already have two areas where people come to shop at, down Michigan Avenue and on Fort Road. Why don't we connect the dots and be that next place of, of commerce in this area? Instead of selling out our, selling out our city, why don't we find companies to come in and invest in our savings? And make this the place where the new Black Wall Street can grow, develop, and be successful. I challenge you, current and those who are running for reelection, to consider what you're doing with our future in the city. Are we selling it out or are we investing into it? Those are just my thoughts.
Alright, thank you. Okay, the next one is Robin. I think it's Edison. You don't have to if you don't want to.
Well, I do want it to be known.
Okay.
So, um, I'm, I'm, me and my husband, uh, we bought a property on Rosewood. Um, Rosewood off of Eastern. And we've been here for like six or seven. Oh, we've been here for about six, about six or seven years. Um, the neighborhood is pretty good. We, the neighbors, you know, been there for a while, so it's pretty fair, you know, how we communicate with each other. My only concern is, uh, the water bill. It's just me and my husband and our water bill be about fifty some a month. That's not bad. But when I look at the sewage, it's like one forty. So to me, that's, I, I'm not, I came up here, wanted to find out what exactly do they do for the sewage for them to charge us that much a month? When I, cause when we get our bill like every month, that's more than my car note. So I was a little concerned about the water bill and why it's so high.
Have you contacted DPS so they can let you know or the Water Department?
Yes, I came up here and she explained to me about something about the infrastructure and how much the city pays out or what they cover or whatever. But I didn't understand it.
So you can talk to, uh, Jerome, Mr. Vivis, he's over DPS.
My, my, the other concern is that I had that the Rosewood, I know that, I see that the city is trying to get, you know, come back and do things for us, the neighborhood, the street cleaning and all of that. That's real, I, I like that. But the street itself, it floods. When it rains, it's so much water, you can't even drive out there. So I, that was one of my concerns too about the whole block really. When it really rains. Yeah, it, it, it's really bad. It's like, you can actually, it's probably come up here. So that was my concern too as well.
Mr. Vivis is on that, and so he can't help you.
Thank y'all for hearing me out.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, John Hearn Junior?
Good evening, Council. To everyone in attendance today. I just had two announcements I'd like to make. First and foremost, I would like to, um, stand here in my capacity as second vice president of the Western Wayne County, uh, NAACP. We're having our annual Freedom Fund Dinner on October the fifteenth. And I would like to invite everyone to come out and share in this event. It's gonna be at the Soho Banquet Center in the city of Westland on October the fifteenth at four P M. We have the pleasure of having the national president of the NAACP to come out and be our guest speaker for that day. And it would be a wonderful thing for our city to be represented in this endeavor. Uh, many of you all know, if you've been keeping up with news at all, that, um, the rights of our people has been infringed upon by the Supreme Court and by adversaries that are attempting to reduce our right to vote and our access to the polls. And the NAACP is standing in the forefront of this fight to stop the gerrymandering and for the districts. And also to try to roll back, you know, some of these laws that are oppressive to our people. So you may not see us out in the headlines all the time, but we're not out on the picket lines per se, uh, uh, protesting these events. We fight our fights in the boardrooms. We fight our fights in the courtrooms and in the halls of Congress. So in order to continue this fight, especially with the onslaught of things that are working against us, all of us have to be engaged. So I want to encourage everyone to get your tickets and come on out and support this event so that we can have the ammunition that we need to continue to fight the good fight of this organization that's been around for over a hundred years. So with that being said, our president, Mr. Gina Wilson Stewart. And those of you all that want to purchase tickets, there are flyers like this at the door. All you have to do is get the Q R code and purchase your tickets through Eventbrite, through Eventbrite to get tickets. Secondly, I would like to just, uh, offer my support to what Chief Ratliff mentioned earlier about the, about the, the cameras. Several years ago, when I was just a youth minister, I used to have an outreach in the Denby Projects. I had, uh, I was ministering to eighty children in that particular area. And part of that outreach, uh, one of the things that I did to try to get the children engaged, the church funded a weekend away for the children to go to the Echo Grove Campground up in Linden, Michigan. Wanted to get them out of their environment because every time I take them to Bible study, the next week I come back, everything I taught had been washed out. So adhering to the word of the Lord and his voice, he said, take them away. Took them away for the weekend. And in that weekend, what we discovered, all of the young ladies from ages five years old up to thirteen were being molested in their own homes by their mother's boyfriends. And in addition to, to that, I won't go into a lot of detail, but that's what we discovered. The young men that were there, after talking with them, the chief mentioned, uh, that don't sniff rule that they live by. Well, after getting their confidence that whatever they shared with us, they could tell us about it. They started telling us about every drug dealer, who, they knew who every drug dealer was in the city. They knew all the B and E artists. They knew all the B and E artists. They knew who murdered who and for what reason. Crimes that the police didn't even have this information of. But living under the don't snitch rule, these kids were carrying that baggage. And they started letting it out, and you could just see the life come back in them. But they were being told by their own mother, "You can't tell on your cousin if you want to get that new, those new Air Jordans. You can't tell on my boyfriend if you want to get that new Nintendo." So they're living, carrying this baggage just so they could get these little accompaniments in life. But it was taking their childhood away. But by that time, it was over. You could see, it was as if they had a blood transfusion. They were young people again. They were young boys, jumping around, having a great time. So I said all that to say, we should back the chief with these cameras, because one of the things that came out in that, out of all of the crime they were witness to, did you know we had a stolen car ring here in the city? And operated like it was hers or in a car. So if I wanted to take my girlfriend out for a date this weekend, I could go to a specific fella and say, "Listen, I want a black Mustang with a drop top." He'd go steal that car for a hundred dollars, and you had it for the weekend. They'd drop it off right there in the project for you to take. So if the cameras have helped stop stuff like that, please support the chief in this endeavor. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Gabe Anderson?
Hello, family. Y'all family, no doubt about it. You know, where is the mayor? I want to talk to him personally. Is he coming back?
He's in the meeting right now. He should be coming back.
Okay, I just want to, and maybe the clerk can help me on that, because I know she up to date of his endeavors and all that. You know, we haven't had, uh,
Okay, order.
Okay, we haven't had, you know, like we normally have a, like a luncheon with the mayor, something like that. You know, that, well, you know, the city people come and talk to the mayor and find out about what's going on. And you know what, maybe, you know Rip Van Vinkle, he slept for, you know, I think I might have fell asleep for a long time, because we haven't had a state-of-the-city address. I don't remember. Because anybody can tell me, have we had one recently?
No, we have not.
You know, that was a very, very important thing for us to have, because that'd let us know what's going on in the city. I think that is very important that we get back to that, you know, get back to the nitty-gritty, okay? And the mayor and I, and I know election is coming up, but we need that. I can't figure out why we ain't had it. The city is going, you know, business and, you know. And I know the mayor, he don't let me talk too long, so I better sit down, right? Maybe I could talk a bit longer, because he, he's not here. I want to say I love y'all, you know, our Goodfellow Organization and all that. We're gonna be having, you know, our breakfast and all that. And of course, we're going pancakes, sausage, we're gonna have grits with cheese and all that, you know. Okay, coffee, juice and all that. We're gonna have a whole lot of good stuff. It might have some entertainment. I might bring my cardboard, and I might break dance, you know. But anyway, y'all come on and help us along. Lovely we had our cleanup this weekend. Now what else I can say? The mayor, he ain't gonna stop me, so.
I'm gonna stop.
Oh, you gonna stop. I love you, sweetheart.
I love you too. Bye-bye. Okay, Marty Robb?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
You're the young man who's starting to talk now, since you only got three minutes. I can't get done in three minutes, but one thing, but no, God bless. But God bless you all, Mayor Council. I don't know, Marty Robb, I run a, this is two over there, you know. They can't see what we're gonna have. But more than anything today, I'm on here, I'm on here on behalf of talking about the things that, as all the residents come here all the time, speaking during our community, our community time to have their concerns, and those things being addressed. You know what I'm saying? When somebody have a concern or have something that they want to speak about, we want to make sure that those things be addressed. Not just heard as water under the bridge. You know, because I've said, council things about the gas stations and things with the chief and me and the fire chief. I've been getting information together, but we've got five gas stations right there on Middle Belt, you know, which we don't need no five gas stations on Middle Belt. You don't have no place around in the state of Michigan almost to have five gas stations in a one-mile radius. You know, and right there, and they're not giving nothing but a community in here today. You just approve somebody else's stuff for a gas station today. You know, who don't do, excuse me, don't do nothing. You know, don't do nothing for the neighborhood, don't do nothing to support our parks and rec, don't do nothing to help keep it, you know, even having that flock camera or whatever going down or whatever, you know, that they were just talking about. You know, having a blue light or something. They not doing nothing to help support. I've been the victim there, you know, and my car been stolen there. So, you know, when I was in the gas station before, so I'm saying, there's things that need to be addressed. And that's my one thing, okay, is getting gas stations out of the way first, and then it's the Ruins River. You know, we got all these funds that's available out here for the City of Inkster and our council people. Or, you know, the city don't understand that commissioners is the ones who wants, who come up with these programs. You gotta, you gotta have good commissioners set out there. You know, and I advise this, this administration and the next one, you know, whoever come up in here the next time, to assign good commissioners who gonna go out and find programs. They find the programs, bring them back to the council, and the council is the ones supposed to implement them, okay? It's not your job to number do what, do what we want y'all to do for us. And in order to do that, you have to have good commissioners. So right now with that Ruins River, the gas stations, the airport noise, that's, you know, that's something that's, council's been going on on my agenda for a hundred years. You know, you know, from the beginning, the EPA money that's out here available for when we ride down Michigan Avenue right now and smell. Ain't no way the Wayne Westland Community Parks or whoever over at Ruins River should be having us out here smelling crap. I wouldn't say S H I T, but my nephew here. But I'm saying, we shouldn't be having to smell crap, okay? God bless you all. I know I gotta go. That community safety, hey, chief, you know, I'm a snitch. Call me what you want, you know what I'm saying? I used to be a part of it, but I'm not a part of it. Hey, but God has blessed me, and he has changed me, so I'm right here, like I say. I love God, I love my family, and I love my community, and I love y'all all. God bless y'all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Pastor Jean Overman?
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Council, I just want to come up on behalf of the NAACP of Western Wayne County and invite every candidate that is on the ballot to join us at a candidate's forum. We are partnering with the Inkster Chamber of Commerce as well as the Inkster Ministerial Alliance. The date is October the eleventh at Dozier at six thirty. You are all invited. This is your official invite, so please join us if you are on the ballot. If you are writing, you certainly can bring information and leave it on the table. Thank you so very much. If you have any questions, please reach out to me personally. I am in charge of this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Western Wayne NAACP, thank you.
All right, that does it for our public participation. City Council, do you have anything?
No.
City Treasurer?
You got the audit, so I'm gonna have the audit firm come out and give a presentation.
Okay, did you, okay, next week, I mean, two weeks? Okay. Can we have some order? I can't, I can't hear. Okay, thank you. Any administration, you need anything? Need to speak? Okay, it's Mayor and Council Communications. Councilman Williams, you have anything?
I didn't hear about that. How would I put it, respond back?
Respond to what?
The company for them houses.
It wasn't happening, we didn't have no response, no.
They didn't come back with nothing?
No, not yet.
Okay.
You have anything?
Nah, no, just bypassed.
All right. Councilwoman Washington, you have anything?
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilwoman Wadley?
Uh, yes. I wanted to bring up the fact that we received this, I guess it's a final about the Flower Bowl and the things I've been bringing up for the past, like, month and a half. And it appears that they're in the wrong. I mean, they shouldn't have been issued. Can you speak to some of this? I've been skimming it since I'm sitting here. But the basic thing it says is, the short answer is that the Flower Bowl two was required to seek a new special land use approval because the property was deemed vacant ninety days after the fire occurred. And when they failed to apply for the demolition and rehabilitation permit. So that's the short answer. So that means they were supposed to go through the process that they didn't go through, but they still have a license. So did, I know I talked to you earlier, and you said you weren't all that familiar, but you could address some things.
Yes, is there a specific question I can answer for you?
Specific, we just wanted, my thing has been that the license for the Flower Bowl should be revoked because they did not follow the process. Now, everybody's left, like the mayor and the planner and all this, but this is from our attorney. And it's a, it's the decision. So I, I think the council needs to either read this and make a decision as far as revoking the license, because they didn't follow the proper procedure.
Okay, so we just got this at, right before, that's probably wasn't why it wasn't brought up, because we just got it as soon as we sat down. So I'm not sure if anybody else had. I haven't had a chance to read it, have you?
Well, I bring it up every week, so it's not, this isn't, this isn't prompting me right now other than to say that what we've been saying for the past two months is correct. And I, I hope my colleagues will take a look at it and make a decision, because that's our job.
Okay, that's it. Okay, Councilman Chisholm?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Councilman Shaw?
Yes, ma'am, chair. It was, it was brought up before, I think, about a no weapons sign at City Hall and at the various city department, I mean, city buildings. Is that something that we can, we can do?
To my understanding, no, that's not something that can be done. Based upon the statute, those would be considered public buildings, and so public buildings are not allowed to restrict that per se.
And that, that, okay, all right, that's all I have.
That's it. Okay, I have nothing at this time. So motion to adjourn? Yes.
I did have something.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I didn't see you.
Just real quick. I just want to take a brief moment. As those of you know from several meetings back, Assistant Chief Constance Slappy accepted a job in Washington, the state of Washington, and she moved away and took that job and taking her place and being promoted to Assistant Chief is Tamika Jenkins, Assistant Chief of Police. I want to introduce her. Very experienced and skilled investigator, great administrator, knows her stuff, and she's all about being there for the community. And if any of you need anything from her, she's open door. Feel free to call us, contact us, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew who the Assistant Chief of Police was.
Welcome. Okay, motion to, anybody else? Yes.
If you can endorse me one more time, I just have one more thing about the brush and the brush yard. That's the brush that's hanging around in the north central section. And is the brush yard open, or what are we gonna do with the brush yard?
You answered it.
So it's open? Now, because I wanted to see how we can really kind of modernize brush yard. I know that, I don't know if we have cameras over there yet. Electric gate, maybe, you know, with the. So you don't want?
I'll tell you secrets. You don't want to share the secrets.
Okay, all right, that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support?
Support.
Okay, all, say, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night.